...experience, you could get both of those. And that, that just seems, they may address the desire to get someone with teaching experience and address the desire to get someone with administrative experience. And, and you. It's just a suggestion, but ultimately the board has to decide what goes in.
And then we'll be meeting middle of the road. I, I like that. I, I do.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. We got a vote on Morrison's motion, which is five, five, five.
Yeah.
Yes.
I've removed the last one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that correct?
No. I just requested roll call. Okay, uh, Jim, let me read the, uh, motion.
The original motion was Morrison had a question for superintendent to have five years as teaching experience, five years in administrative experience, and five years as an administrator within a district. Then he amended, I mean, he removed the five years as an administrator within a district. But Doris seconded the five, five and five before he amended.
So he would need, he would need to get Ms. Black to agree to second his.
amended motion.
Yeah. He's withdrawing that one provision. He would need to get a second for that.
A second.
The amended motion. Okay.
Well, we vote on the motion, the amended motion without the five, last five.
Hold on.
Kevin.
No.
Ryan.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Mr. Massey.
No.
Mr. Meriwether.
Yes.
No.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Five minutes.
Hold up, uh, motion fails. Any other suggestions you, the, uh, polls criteria?
I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that, uh, three to five years teaching experience preferred, uh, three to five years administrative experience prefer, or required. Uh, master's degree required, doctorate preferred.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion second discussion.
Three to five teaching, three to five administrative, masters required, doctorate preferred.
It's, it's, it's good reason. I just hope that at the end of this meeting, region now, and I like to see the motion we're about to vote on carried. The community need to see how we as board members that they are paying out very small salary and high working experience, uh, time. They need to see how each of us feel about teachers, how we feel about administrators, how we feel about educational association. We are showing that very clearly tonight that we want less experience for the people who supervise them. We want to work the devil out of them. We want to pay them, uh, not enough money. We, they come before us and ask first, can you move this to this? And we just have a hissing. It's a very sad thing about some kind of students just that we're doing what we're doing tonight. And I want that roll call for, for the next vote, because I want to request the carry back to how we're going to vote on it and how we respect teachers.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, they want to go first? Do you want to go first?
I just wanted to get clarity because I heard the word preferred a few times. And I just want to make sure that the motion is just so, that's three to five teaching required, three to five administrative.
That's why, and I did say preferred on that first.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure we had understanding.
Three to five required, masters required. The minimum according to T S B A is what a faculty, right?
According to the law in Tennessee about faculty, that's the minimum requirement to be a superintendent.
So I, you know, if they're going to say three to five, you know, and I know what people want, I would prefer too. Of one, the master's degree and, and doctorate degree, but if this is what T S B A stating and we're adopting this particular policy, then we need to say at least a faculty's degree. We need to keep that since that is a matter of policy. You have to have that to get a master's degree. Yeah.
So Chairman, just, I would like to comment. What, voting on this and, and, and the criteria for the brochure and taking in resumes does not reflect how you feel about teachers. That I have sat on this board, been on four years, and my main concern has been teachers and students. And I've been beat up over it. And I, and I think a lot of people have, but I, I just want to make sure everybody understands. I already have, I, I already have in my mind, criteria I have for a superintendent when we start looking at resumes. But I've just, I don't want to limit the resumes that we've received. Because we put a five and a five in there and another five and, you know, another five after that one. I just don't want to do that. That is not, but it does not reflect how I feel about teachers. I think teachers are the most, one of the most important parts of our society. They have more impact on our children a lot of times than the parents do from simple fact they spend eight hours of day with it. I want to take care of our teachers. I always have wanted to take care of our teachers and I always will do my best to take care of the teachers. I just don't want somebody to say one vote reflects how I feel about teachers and I just want to make sure everybody understands.
But, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to echo that. It, to me, it's an issue of limiting your pool. And to equate that to slap in the face to the teachers, I think is, I, I can't connect those dots, but I just want to echo what, what, what you have to say.
Well, I want, Chairman, I want to say, as you see, I voted the first time because I really wanted higher criteria. I second the second time because I still feel that we need to put a limit. And if we don't have some limit on it, then you really going to get a big pool. They're not going to get anything. So again, I too want to have teachers with the approval of what we're doing. And I said it in the beginning, this is what they're saying. We got the survey. We heard from the, uh, uh, J M C. So we do need to continue and have a limit. If we don't, then you talking about a strange pool. That's what we want to get.
One quick thing, and it, it piggybacks on Kevin and Jim and Doris now. Looking at the surveys from the teachers, the responses we got from the teachers and the people that talked to me, because there wasn't adequate time, um, nowhere over here doesn't say you've got to have been a teacher for, you should have had classroom experience. There's no time limit. They look, they look for a strong leader. There's no time limit. This doesn't reflect how I feel about teachers. You don't ever think that, no.
But I attended the, um, forum here and it was with staff and administrators. And I remember very vividly, we had one administrator back there that stated that she would like to see someone with years of experience as a principal and as a teacher, you know, and to this, I, I think I did speak with, uh, Mr. Torres concerning that because it was one of the things that a lot of our teachers were stating, you know, not even teachers, but people in our community who like to see years of experience. But I say this, and maybe I shouldn't say it, but I would say, incidentally, when we had our selection and, and Dr. Ruffin was approved as the next superintendent, her years of qualifications were more than, uh, five years of teaching experience, more than five years, you know, as being a principal. You, you know, she had a large, um, should I say, she had an extensive background. And she did, to me, extremely well, you know, in working out this district. A lot of people probably didn't like some of the changes, but it comes, even with the next superintendent, you know, there could be changes, you know. But I say this, if we don't put a limit on something, we're going to fall for anything and we're going to have, just go backwards to me. So to me, there should be a stated time. I have no problem with three to five. But still, I would like to see someone with, like, the community has stated, administrators have stated, you know, stakeholders have stated, with someone with more than five years experience, five, at least five years or more. And so we did it before and there's not a reason that why we cannot do it again, you know. And so I don't know, you know, where we are when we have gotten all of this information that we need to move forward for our next superintendent, but I do feel like there should be some particular timeline.
Mr. Chairman.
Um, to piggyback on Mr. Alexander, Mr. Arnold, Mr. Campbell, Ms. Black, um, to say that I don't support teachers, I, I take great offense to that. Um, like I said, my mother is a retired school administrator. My younger brother is a, um, a, a principal in a neighboring district. Um, I mean, I have four children who spend more time with their schoolteachers every single day than they spend with me. Um, and they service my children as counselors and support as well as my husband and I. So to, so, so to say because I voted down a motion that had a time limit on it, says that I don't care about teachers, I, that is absolutely false. Um, I do care about teachers. And again, um, I appreciate Mr. Arnold making his motion, putting some time on there that we do need to have someone running our district that does have experience. Um, but I have met plenty of administrators in this district alone who have less than five years' teaching experience and less than five years' administrative experience, who I feel like would be amazing candidates as superintendent. And so I don't, I don't want to limit the pool. I don't. So Mr. Meriwether, you and I are, I guess, going to agree to disagree, but for the record, I like teachers. I appreciate teachers. Um, I wouldn't be half the mother I am today if it weren't for teachers.
Chairman, I see what I said and, uh, everybody has an opinion. It's nothing personally involved, it's just my opinion.
Oh, yes, it was.
Every board member on here, but we're in them at the end of the day. We're number one thirty-seven, not one forty. Our students are not reading on grade level. Just to make sure that we know, I own part of the district. We have, uh, we just voted in, elected, uh, the president. The association is not happy. We got more problems than a man going to jail. So, uh, I just said we need to move on and vote it up. I just think the record needs to play. Those who still look for movement and standard, those who fail, that's a standard, it's fine. So that's what we showing, like, we showing that who's going to vote for standard and vote to move this system into the next ten or fifteen year. To those who says, let's lower it down so we can have more people applying, and, uh, that's what we're going to get. So let's go for it.
Just, just to have clarification, just to make sure I understand, because I want to make sure I get, I get it right in what we advertise and everything in fact. So we're saying, you, the board is saying, three to five years of teaching experience required.
Minimum motion?
Just to make sure, three to five years as an administrator required. Master's degree required. Doctorate preferred. Okay. Just want to make sure that's what I have. I just wanted to double check.
Uh, who?
Uh, I did, I did hear teaching, teaching and administrative.
Three, three to five years teaching required as a classroom teacher, to clarify those to me, Ms. Arnold. Classroom teacher. And then three to five years and administrated, administrator, administration.
Correct.
Okay. Required.
Roll call vote. Before we vote, uh, I just want to make, uh, statement, uh, we are voting, voting, uh, uh, unconscious in what I re, I re believe that we need how standards, but I think with this process, uh, we will give those in addition to some of the others. So, uh, we moving along, uh, cause of the vote.
Mr. Chairman, I would request a reverse roll call, please.
You ready?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
The reverse roll call leads, I go first.
Reverse, I'm sorry. I can hear that. I'm sorry.
So I'll vote yes.
Mr. Meriwether.
No.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Ms. Hampton.
No.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Ms., uh, Black.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold. Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson.
No.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, so that is the minimum qualifications, right? Can we also have a vote on adoption of the, this, this criteria on page twenty-one?
I, I moved to accept the proposed criteria on page twenty-one.
I second.
The motion is second. On the second, or a high, uh, level? Those are not, I'm going down.
Okay, just, I, I could repeat the motion for Mr. Jackson.
Motion to accept the proposed criteria on page twenty-one. Of the T S B A recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, second.
And you have page twenty-one.
Go post the motion again.
Okay, how most, how most, um.
Question, are we ready to start?
No. Yes, yes.
Click, click, man.
So that's, um, on page three is the timeline of the applications will open tomorrow. It will be opening through January, and it's only brochure, they can go in five and, and everything. On, in the, at the February board meeting, we will bring back recommended candidates. In return, page four, this is where the procedures come into play at that point. So we'll refer up, up to five candidates to the board based on the minimum qualifications and the criteria adopted by the board. The board will interview the candidates in an open meeting. Only school members allowed to ask questions and the board will ask the same questions of each interview, each candidate. We will provide an interview guide with sample questions, sample, the board can ask, but they won't, based on the criteria. The reason we say the same questions is so you can get a feel of those responses from this, each candidate. That way it's uniform. Um, following the same interview process and end of the process, each board member, um, will list their top two choices on a written and signed ballot and they will be read. And then at that point, the top two, and the board can invite them back for a second round of interviews. And after that, hopefully you will find your next superintendent. Now I ask that the board vote on these procedures, so these procedures are established now and that everyone is aware of what is going to happen within the board in that timeline.
We have voted, uh, we vote on number one. Uh, five, you would recommend the four of the five candidates. I think it will make sure that we see all the.
You will see, we will give you everything, every, every application, everyone that applies, you will get those applications. We'll bring back another report with the top up to five people and recommend you adopt those five as you're selected and interviewed. But you.
Before we, before we do that, there's someone in, um, we want to bring up, make clues. We do that, we do the exclusive.
The board, so we'll, we'll give you the recommendation and you can, let's say we bring three. And you have another individual that you, the board wants to interview. The board can vote, you add that individual to the list. The board has that ability. We're bringing you recommended individuals and it says the board may accept or reject any of the candidates. So you have that ability to, as a board to add.
Mr. Chairman, I ask, it says, new names may not be submitted by board members.
By individuals, so the board would vote.
Okay.
We want to.
Okay, okay. I was just making sure.
The board as a body would say, yes, we want to add Mr. Smith or Ms. Smith to that list.
Mr. Miller. I don't understand that we're closing the floor on, and right here we're finished, we're moving on to another item.
Yeah, we just adopted the criteria. We all just voted on the criteria on page twenty-one.
We voted on that criteria and we voted on the one that we just added. We did not vote to close the, the motion on any additional criteria. We did not do that.
No.
So then that floor, the floor is getting older.
For criteria.
Yes. Am I forgetting? If you want to add, we already voted on one. The one, the one that we moved on and the one that we added, that's the only criteria we're going to have on our board meeting. We voted on the criteria. Ten.
Cause we voted on the ten.
Ten criteria on page three.
And.
And.
With, yes, add additional qualifications on number nine.
You had two votes. The first one was the minimum qualification, three to five years of teacher, three to five years of administrator, masters required, doctorate preferred, that was the first. The second round was the proposed criteria from the community responses on page twenty-one.
And I seem to say here about behavior.
Miller. I, I would, I would still feel comfortable adding some additional criterias and whether it's going to up or going down, that was just, oh, what we want to have, so if I'm in order, I like to add, see if we get the circuit and move on. But we want to add additional. Yes. You got, in that motion? Yes. You got it. Motion is adding additional, add criteria. Yes. Got a motion?
Oh, did you, motion?
Yes, motion to add additional criteria.
He needs to move what's specific criteria.
Oh, you want, I exactly.
You want me to read the, the one that I want, I'm confused.
No, what, what, we just voted right now.
What we did, the add.
Yeah, we accepted these criteria.
We add more than one.
You want to add, what do you want to add? A criteria, right?
Yes, I want to add additional criterias. And I thought what we was doing with you was something, the motion that we add and then much, the, the motion failed, we don't add, motion passed, we do it.
Yeah, I do. I said, I said.
Point of order, I, at this point in time, I don't want to add, so I'm going to vote no to this. But if Mr. Meriwether, I don't know what he was thinking over here, so I might actually be in, in favor of that. So we're getting the cart before the horse here. I think we need to hear his criteria and motion, then we can vote on that specific criteria. If you say we're making a motion to add, well, then you got to add something. And I'm not afraid to be opposed to that.
Okay. That sounds good.
Number one, I would actually like to see us add a, a superintendent who turn around experience with data to prove it. We got to have someone that can turn this district around from what's sinking in the public. Number two is someone that has experience in discipline and data to prove it. We have a discipline problem and I don't see in the criteria that we voted on that is a priority with us. The teachers are saying we can't teach because of discipline, and we know that. And yet we sit here tonight, we don't even have to do that. I think the teachers are just having a feeling they was. Number six that we need a superintendent that has knowledge of country, diversity. We have a population of seventy-five percent minority and we need someone that's going to come in and know how to deal with both minorities and, and the D R. All of this in the district. So those are my three that I would like to see added into the.
Oh, yes.
I think it's the person part of number two that we've already got.
And who's that?
It, it.
Yeah, it does say.
U S L. There was number two, I was wrong, I was wrong on that, I moved that we put, uh, the words to it down. We got a motion, you mentioned it was motion.
Yes, you got the motion.
You want to add minority experience.
With data to prove.
To prove it, experience in school discipline.
As data to prove. You got some motion? You got a motion, a second?
That should be it. Yes, it should be it. Yeah, I'm sorry.
You already got it. I'll call roll call though. Did you hear the motion?
Mr. Alexander Meriwether is making a motion to add additional criteria and that criteria would include turn around experience with data to prove it, experience in school discipline and data to prove it. Ms. Doris seconded.
Just those two.
No discussion.
Yes. When you define this data, that's going to be so subjective, it's, you, the subjectivity of. We, we've got to have definite clarity, uh, definition of what you're talking about, of the, the data. Where's it coming from? What, what is it?
Okay. If we looking for a superintendent who has turnaround experience, when I say turnaround experience, we have test scores that are, we're in the bottom five percent. What has this superintendent been able to do in the district, wherever he worked at? And he has data to prove that he moved the leader from A to B.
What is that data?
Sure.
What is that data?
And that's what be what he got. I can't tell you what he.
What data? Like T cap, T cap scores, T R score, C score.
This, this is so wild.
That, that is. So we're talking about, exactly what you're talking about, test scores. When you talk about someone with discipline, I want to hear someone that had success being able to deal with discipline, who has come in and, and a number of students who've been suspended, has come down. Number of students suspended, the in-school suspended, women students suspended to the alternative schools. If we bring someone in this district and we just last year on my, on my motion, outsourced the alternative school. Not only we outsourced the alternative school, this board, we have not discussed it. This board is going to have to evaluate the embossment program in April. That's coming straight from the embossment itself. They said, we want to find out what we're working. We got to make preparations. Four, as I know, I'm the only one on the board that has that experience in order to really truly evaluate an alternative program, because I created the program that we're talking about. So we need to sit down and I have it, I have the actual, uh, sample of the value we're shooting. When we bring a superintendent in and superintendent has no experience in discipline, no experience in moving test scores, moving in-school suspension, moving T, uh, T cap score, what in the world are we doing? Who are we going to get? We're going to have a wide group, not even what everybody to do, to put their name in the box. We have not done a good job tonight in the community to give us a chance to see it.
My, my question is, is what if no, nobody puts in this superintendent?
So what now?
What if some, nobody puts in that's been a superintendent? What if everybody that puts in, just say, for instance, people put in that's never been a superintendent before? They won't have anything, and that's all we have big bro, we, we, we don't have anybody big bro. Because they, they won't have that, that's, I just, I'm going to look at the resume, and if I don't see that kind of stuff in it.
Okay, I was going to say, I, I understand what you're saying, but, uh, we, first of all, we're looking for experience, um, superintendent. But, someone can prove that they did a turnaround at a school, on school level, because I, I, actually, I have the experience of that. I worked in the worst school district in the city. And we brought up test scores, that can be proven, and we, uh, all of the numbers happened in that area around the school. But once those students were in this school, it was definitely in, in, in the district. So, you can't prove if that person has not been a superintendent, he or she has probably been an administrator. So, that can be shown and proven.
Yeah, um, I actually agree with Morris to an extent with this, um, you can ask. Actually, Ben, I had a conversation earlier today about this, and I made that statement, I have to have someone who takes this one seriously, and has an understanding of how to correct the trajectory our, our system is on. I said that to Senator Ed Jackson earlier today, who stopped by the office. And people heard me say that, I believe that we need someone like that. I also believe we need someone with experience to continue the trajectory that we're on. I don't really care if they've done it somewhere else, if they can buy into what we're doing now, I'm a fan of it, and what we're doing now is working. And I think the place to determine that is in the interview process, and the questions that we ask, and we can ask candidates to bring their data at that point. And that might be apples and oranges, but we can make a determination, look, the person, that, that he or she that brought this data, I'm impressed by that, I'm impressed with that plan. They're going to steal that plan from this city, whatever, and it's worth theirs, so I'm going to vote for them, because they're going to bring that to, back to Tennessee, so. Once again, to limit it is not, is not best for the district. Let's, I don't care if we have fifty applicants, I don't care if we, look at fifty applications, I don't care about that, but I, in my, in my questions, there were, Morris, I would recommend that be one of your questions that you ask about this one specific. And what that candidate's plan for or experience in is with that, and that way, we don't limit ourselves to, to who's going to apply and who's not. Let's just take up those kind of questions and those details in the interview process, when we have the folks standing in front of us that potentially could get a job.
Basically, echo what, um, AJ has stated, um, to your question, uh, Kevin, basically, if they don't have it, they don't have it, because you look at the next person that is, um, basically meets the cri, criteria. So, I'm just saying this, you know, if they don't have turnaround, whoever, fifty applicants out of fifty, they don't have what we're looking for. We just need to look at the second best of, out of the fifty, and just move on from that. It's nothing, you know, too hard, you know? It, this is just a criteria, and that's just been added. And so, you know, I think this is a viable, because we have to see some changes, especially, like they said, in discipline. And then I would like to see someone who has some experience in that, in that area.
Mister Chairman, I, I do too. And, and when I look at the resumes that we're given, that's what I'm going to be looking for. But to word it in, I, I just think we're doing ourselves a disservice. I, I, that's just personally how I feel, because I already know what I'm looking for. I've been on the board for, like I say, over three years now, I know, I already know what I'm looking for. I alre, I think I know what the community is looking, is looking for, I believe I know what the teachers are looking for. And the, to limit the pool, I just don't agree with. That's, that's, that's where I, that's where I stood for over three years now, that's where I'm going to continue to stand, and that's where I stand, and I just, I think the more you limit the pool, the less opportunity we get, and I'm just not for it. I, I mean, I voted for the three to five, even though I didn't want any years on it, just to be honest, just to compromise. But, but that's just how I feel, I don't want to limit anything, I want to put what we're looking for in this, in this, without any years, if you bring me a bunch of data that says, prove to me that you turned around this school, or that school, or this district, or that district. You know, we'll see that when we're interviewing, and when we're looking at the resumes, that's the whole part of it, it, that we're looking for, I, I just, the more we add, the more, I'm, I'm sorry. I just, I just don't want to limit anymore, I think this speaks for itself.
Chairman?
I do apologize for being late to the conversation, I didn't have to use the restroom. Um, I think that what Kevin said is when we get into the interview process, is when we'll be able to ask those questions about, where do you stand on student discipline? And honestly, I don't have any experience in that area to ask a question like that, so I would hope, Mister Meriwether, that you would ask our superintendent candidates about their experience in reducing suspensions and things like that. Because that's not from my bucket of experience. Um, so that's where the nine of us, we're all very diverse in our experiences that we bring to the table, and I think that those kinds of things would flesh out in the interview process. And that's my opinion.
Yeah, that's good. I'm going to vote, vote on?
Mister Alexander.
No.
Mister Arnold.
No.
Ms. Black.
Yes.
Mister Campbell.
No.
Ms. Hampton.
Yes.
Mister Massey.
No.
Mister Meriwether.
Yes.
Ms. Stewart.
No.
And Mister Johnson.
No.
Chairman, I say. Hopefully, the community is taking a, a good look at this. Think about this, we have a district problem in our district, and the dark though, and I hate to say it, the dark of that district problem, because we are seventy-five percent of the population, is coming from minorities. The minority voted to address it, to save those kids from born from the pipeline to the prison. And the non-black, uh, board members voted add, um, not a priori, just remember, it's a sad day in Jackson, Tennessee. And we sit here, this is what we say to the community, and yet, I'm the one that has been said to be the one that created the most hell in on the board. After I'm the one that's doing the most thinking too, because we showed it tonight, we voted on racial land, we do not care about the discipline problem. We care about wider the pool, so we can get several superintendents to come in. I'm going to say it, but to people, in my personal opinion. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mister Chairman. I think the only thing, if there's any questions on the procedures, I think the last thing to do is just for the board to adopt the procedures.
Those are on page.
Page four.
I know the procedures, I went over just.
All right, Ben. Appreciate it. This will be hosted tomorrow. Okay, next on, uh, the agenda, um. Dale, are we getting this, this rose?
If anybody just has any questions, I don't want to just say any.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to accept the listed, uh, disciplinary.
It's impartial, impartial.
Hearing officers.
I second.
Uh, Kevin. Kevin, did you step in?
I did.
Twenty-eight, David, we're voting on, who are the partial hearing officers? Got a motion for second? In discussion? All in favor? You want to sign the by?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Next, uh, David, just never hearing authority.
We have two D H A appeals, uh, we need to take those up separately. Uh, as I discussed Monday night, your options tonight is to either grant a hearing. If we do, if you guys do that, then we'll have a date set for that at a later time, where you, you will hear evidence. Or the other option is that you can either affirm or modify the decision of the D H A and the superintendent without hearing based upon, based solely upon the record that's before. So, those are your two options. Uh, the first, uh, incident is, I'll just refer to it as Liberty Peg Incident. And we'll need a motion, uh, involving that particular D H A appeal.
Can I ask a question? On, on, on the first one? Which, I'm assuming is the Liberty District.
Yeah, so we'll make that before.
Is, is. The, the hearing officers made a decision, and you, for a hundred and eighty days, and then you are going to reevaluate.
Yeah, I already modified it, that's.
Right, modification, that's, that's all.
So, they, this mayor, he was already working his hundred and eighty days, I have modified that to a different amount of days, already.
I move that we accept. I second. Without a hearing.
Without a hearing, that's correct, and I second.
Okay, got a motion for second? In discussion? All in favor? You want to sign the by?
Aye.
Mister Meriwether's not here, we didn't even hold the vote. We haven't, no.
The second D H A appeal is a Northside Incident student, uh, same, same options on that one. Uh, now, on this particular one, I don't think there was a modification by the superintendent. There was, yeah, because you're going to reevaluate it March twenty-second, that's what. Uh, so, the same, need a motion on this one, either without a hearing or with a hearing, so.
Again, I move that we accept the superintendent. Without hearing. I second. Motion.
Excuse me? Are we able to speak?
Actually, you have to make that decision on the record, without a hearing from any, from the administration or from the parents. Uh, now, if you want to hear from us, we'll need that, you guys will need to have a motion to grant a hearing. So.
You got a motion for second, in discussion? All in favor? You want to sign the by?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda, uh, approval of insurance rates, AJ?
Uh, yeah, no, no change from, from Monday.